Are you ready? I'm going to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Here.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Kinsella.
Here.
Alderman Pousa.
Here.
Alderman Vitter.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ovion.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderman Cybert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Deletty. Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
Alderman Wigginton.
Here.
You have a call.
I believe Alderman, it wasn't clear if Alderman Deletty was going to be able to make it or not, but he'll be excused if we don't see him because it's a special meeting. He was trying to see what he could work on this guy.
We didn't, we didn't demand that any, ask that any of all department heads other than I asked for Anissa, Eric, Royce, and Chief Clay's here voluntarily tonight. But the rest of them, I did not ask them to come because there were, this was a limited agenda. I want to remind you before we get started of disaster plans here at Lindenwood. If we would have a storm everywhere in this building during a meeting, we'd ask you to carefully go downstairs to the basement and get into the middle hallway where there's no glass that can easily be subject to your coming in. Get into a center room. If we had to leave because of smoke or fire or some other disastrous type reason, we'd ask that you carefully exit the building and then we would ask that you would meet in front of the auditorium of the steps so we can kind of get a head count and see where everybody's at, okay? Those are the two. Also, I remind you that we are videotaping and we are audio recording, so please speak up. If we have people from the audience participating, please go to the microphone at the appropriate time when you're called and speak into the microphone. Alderman, please use the microphones on your tables so that the, when they review the minutes and take transposals, that they can hear clearly. At this time, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. I officially open the public hearing. And the public hearing is regarding annexation agreement for approximately 10.1 acres of land located off southwest of the intersection of Frank Scott Parkway and South 11th Street. Parcels 07-25.0-400-018, then it's comma 07-25.0-400-019. This is the legal description. It's commonly known as Shomluffel property. Bill and Carmen Shomluffel, and their property, like I said, is property that they wished to annex to the city of Valville. Part of the reason that we needed this special meeting tonight, there was a mix-up. As you know, this is my first night back. I want to thank Dr. Sillsby. And there was a little mix-up about getting this advertised, and that's, we're trying to get this going so that the developer can move on. So at this time, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone who has, let be known that Alderman Deletty's here. Great, we have all 16. Thank you. Is there anyone who has any comments far or comments concerning this annexation at this time? Yes, sir. Please give your name.
Michael Hackburg. Once again, the city is looking at annexing additional property, bringing it into the city with promises of more development. And I know many of you know that I've done the research on TIF 10, and that's when the city annexed 1,900 acres into the city. And of that 1,900 acres that was annexed in 1999, New 2000, 1,800 acres is sitting vacant and undeveloped. There's a lot of promises, a lot of, oh, the developer's going to do it, Valville's going to be a destination, businesses are going to explode in the area, and then nothing happens except we get stuck with maintaining additional property within the city. We have to police it, we have to maintain it, roads have to be done out there. Again, when is it going to stop or is it just going to be another thing? Let's develop the existing vacant property within the city and stop sprawling out to the outer limits where something may happen, something may not happen. We got into the Shride project thinking that, oh, that's going to happen, then we got into another agreement, let's fast-track it, give them twice as much incentive to get the job done, and they haven't hit a single deadline. There's no convenience store out there, there's no restaurant out there, they hit all, they missed all their deadlines, but they still have that agreement. The taxpayers are the only ones that do not benefit from annexing additional property that cannot be maintained by the existing stamp. Thank you.
Anyone else like to say anything at this public hearing in reference to this annexation? Any of the aldermen have anything they'd like to say?
Yeah, Mayor, just a couple of questions regarding the annexation. I think we'd be satisfied pretty quickly. If it could be detailed for me, okay, the rationale for the annexation itself. I get that they want to come into the city, but what's the, what's the purpose? What's going to happen after that?
Well, I think it's pretty clear. Mr. Keller and his group, Mr. Todd Keller, has come to us and we've approved Parkway West, which is, I believe, going to be probably breaking some ground day after Labor Day. And this annexation is in staging possible more growth for that in the future, fair to say?
That's correct.
And it's a part of his group's coming to us in recent months to be poised to add that to the plans that they already have with us. They've already got some lots spoken for, they've got some upfront parcels ready to get breaking ground, and this would be a part of his development, and that's why the Shomluffels and Mr. Keller have come to, come to terms, so they're working together on this.
Mind if I ask Todd a question?
Yeah.
Todd, do you have some specific plans for this piece of property that's under consideration for annexation?
No, not at this point, but it is adjacent to the property due south, and it just makes sense for them to look at the future and us as well. As you all know, we have an agreement for acreage to the north. We've had some difficulty with the property owner because of not wanting to come into the city and reneaming on the original agreement that he made with us to be able to do such. That's one of the reasons we've had a couple of months of delays in trying to work everything out, so, no, we have no immediate plans, but it gives us growth in the future.
And you're ready to start, potentially start developing on the what, the first 50 acres?
Yeah, we have six office buildings, 10,000 square foot office buildings, and 74 residential lots wrapped around a couple of lakes. That'll be the first phase on 49 and a half actual acres.
And that will sit right between the Shomluffel property to the south of that and the acreage that you have, still have an option on to the north?
And we actually have a contract with 40 acres to the north, the remainder of the Riker farm.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Walker.
Yes, sir.
You say you're going to break ground next week, hopefully?
No, not necessarily next week, very soon. Obviously, we're waiting for the crops to come off. We have, we have parrons on there that hasn't come off, and that'll be taken out probably in two to three weeks.
I guess when I said that, I think, Royce, isn't it true that Hanks might be starting on a sewer?
Yeah, they're ready to start on the sewer.
So that was what, I'm sorry to say, they're, they're going to start on the sewer.
So do you have any idea when to start on the buildings?
Well, we're, we're looking at, we've got preliminary plans for the, for two buildings right now, and then the third building will be built at the same time, and then the other three will be built in the second phase. So those would be the three buildings to the north of the entry between the entryway and the Riker project. The people that want the buildings want to be in there yesterday, so, you know, part of this was getting the sewer extension and then getting the annexation, which was delayed here again because of the problem with the people of the north not wanting to come into the city. We had no other way of getting into the city until we were able to find another path to be contiguous to city property, and that took a couple of months to get that done.
So do you have any idea when you'll start the buildings?
As far as the physical construction of the building or moving the earth and put it, we have to put in the, we have to do the grading, we have to put in the infrastructure. We're waiting right now on Ameren, they give us the final numbers on what it's going to cost and what the plan is to bring the utilities to the site, as well as all the others. You know, we have the sewer, we have the power, and we have the gas, and all have to come in. So until they give us their final timetable to do all that, I can't give you the actual starting date of the buildings themselves, but that all has to be done first.
And the first phase of the homes?
There'll be nine homes. I think we had, we, I don't have the diagram with me, there'll be nine homes, and the six buildings will be the first phase of the first part of the project. As you come into the entry, there will be homes on either side leading back to the first lane, and then the buildings will be in front. I don't have the diagram to show you, otherwise I would.
Any other questions, Mayor? Yes?
You know, one thing about the annexation, we are a landlocked city. I mean, the only place we can grow is south. And if people come to us here and they annex to the city, who are we to say, well, you know, we're really not interested? The development doesn't have to be done right then and there. We've got to, if we're going to grow, we've got to be in a position to acquire property for future, for futures down the, thanks, Henry, for future considerations down the road. So to say that, well, you know, with this property sitting idle and nothing's happened to it, 1,800 acres, you know what, we went through a heck of recession where nothing was going on. We have got the potential, though, with those, that acreage, with this annexation, when the opportunity presents itself, we have to be ready to take advantage of it.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hearing, no other questions or concerns, I'm going to close this public hearing regarding this annexation. Remove that vote of participation. Does anyone this evening have anything additional to comment on during public participation? Yes, sir.
Rick Brown, Valville. Nice little quote, seems appropriate tonight. "Oh, what a tangled web we weave, once we first seek to deceive." You know, the last few meetings I've been here, Bob Sago made up an ordinance, or a change to an ordinance without telling anybody here, including the mayor, which I apologize for not including him in the first time at the last meeting. And how many of y'all like liars? Raise your hand. Well, I don't like them either. I gotta redo my figures, though. I said 16 aldermen, and the mayor didn't know about what was done back in 2013. It's now 14 aldermen. Because two aldermen that are sitting here tonight knew exactly what went on on February the 6th, 2013, when the change was made to the definition of occupancy. And it's Mr. Kinsella and Mr. Musgrove. And in a meeting a few weeks ago, they both took absolutely opposite positions on what was done at the 2013 meeting. They said, well, this is what we meant, have any inspections if somebody moves in their daughter or their parent, and everything. Well, that's bogus, and I don't like getting lied to. So here's the deal. Right here in this hard drive is the meeting from February 6th, 2013. The mayor was there, he spoke about the proposed changes to the occupancy ordinance, and all it was, was making sure that people added the names on the occupancy certificate that are living there. Mike Iskam was there. He spoke about, they want this so they know who's living at the home for police and crime purposes. There was never any intent whatsoever, and it's crystal clear by what's on this tape, that there was going to be an inspection of homes while people were living there just to have a parent or a son or a daughter or whoever who had been to the home with, as long as they didn't exceed the occupant loan. It went further than that. The only exception to that would have been if the home wasn't inspected since the ordinance first started in 1988. And that, and the only thing that they would do is come in and measure the bedrooms and get the hell out. And that's just to determine the occupant loan. The mayor spoke very eloquently at this meeting about how somebody had changed so you had to pay $50 or $25 to add someone to the occupancy permit. That's why when he was questioning Bob Sago out here that night, I knew after reviewing the tape, that he didn't know what Sago did. Sago did this all on his own. Well, we've got two co-conspirators here that are trying to protect Sago. And like I said, I don't like getting lied to. You are hurting the people of this town by letting this thing go farther and farther because it could be two or three months or four months. Going through legal inordinates and this other stuff to try to fix something that there wasn't an ordinance to pass in the first place. There were so many people at this meeting, when Sago was there, he stated no inspections. There was only going to be a bedroom measurement only, and Terry from the housing department explained that.
Mr. Brown, okay, I brought you over four minutes, but it's going to be on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, for the next six months, and you guys are going to send people in homes violating their Fourth Amendment rights.
It's going to be on the agenda for the ordinance meeting in September. Now, this past meeting was canceled, Garrett was out of town, and I was left with my hip. We didn't think it was good to have that meeting if the two.
So you're going to keep requiring people to get inspections, and you're going to keep issuing tenants.
I don't, I don't know the truth of any inspections since this thing has been.
Oh, well, nobody's going to know because Garrett Orner and you and Aaron won't give me the FOIA's. Aaron acted on her own as a FOIA officer around Dallas Cook to keep me from getting the FOIA's I asked for. Tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, I'm making the public access counselor at the Attorney General's office. I'm four for four now, and I'll be five for five. So, you know, this is silly. These are all your constituents that are being hurt.
You've had more than enough times tonight.
Yeah, and you're going to take plenty more of it.
Is there anyone else? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation. And we're going to move on. We have no presentations, recognitions, or appointments. We do have on here, we have the council meeting approval from August 15th. Do I hear a motion to receive and file? Motion, Alderman Cybert, do I hear a second? Second, Alderman Ovion. Any discussions, additions, or corrections? All in favor of receiving and filing the minutes from that date, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have claims payable and disbursements, we don't have any. That'll be at the meeting on the 6th. I'm sorry, they have to listen. We move on now to 10, oral reports. Alderman Wigginton, we have a conversation. Do you want to go ahead and make the motion about the solicitors?
Yeah, in the city attorney, Harner, I've never been about approving something like this. There's six people on here. I see that some of them do have, this is on police records. I don't know how we approach this. I don't know, do we vote on each one?
We do, we normally do. But what I was going to say, as you and I talked before the meeting, there's one that's, I think, crystal clear.
Right.
I would ask that you might make a motion to approve that person, and then I'm going to ask the police chief and I and Garrett on Thursday to go through the rest of them because I just noticed this this afternoon real late, that there was a couple of them that I too questioned, being out. I'm just getting back into the swing of things, and I think that we'll put the other ones, the remainder that we don't approve here tonight, on the agenda for Tuesday the 6th. Is that okay?
In that case, I would like to make a motion that we approve Dakota Andrews for his solicitor's license, that we table the other five for consider, future consideration and discussion. That's my motion.
We got motion, we have a second, second's by Alderman White, motion was by Alderman Wigginton. We're approving the one person, what's the name again?
Dakota Andrews.
Dakota Anders?
Andrews.
Andrews, I'm sorry, I didn't have it right here in front of me. And the other remaining solicitor's requests are going to be tabled, and I believe we'll be back with you on those for your consideration on September 6th.
Should that be two different votes? Can we do this one? You can do it as one.
We have a motion to.
You have an option to separate.
If somebody doesn't want to vote, that's fine, we can separate it out. If nobody has a problem with this, you're voting for, approve all the one and table the rest of, in the motion. If there's no other questions or comments, I'm going to call for a roll call just because of the uniqueness.
Alderman Hazel.
Aye.
Alderman Kinsella.
Aye.
Alderman Pousa.
Aye.
Alderman Vitter.
Aye.
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Alderman Randall.
No.
Alderman Ovion.
No.
Alderman Anthony.
Aye.
Alderman Sillsby.
Aye.
Alderman Dittelman.
Aye.
Alderman Cybert.
Aye.
Alderman White.
Aye.
Alderman Deletty.
Aye.
Alderman Elmore.
Aye.
Alderman Musgrove.
Aye.
Alderman Wigginton.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, we move on. I'd ask for a motion to approve an amended development agreement with Noble Inc. And I'm going to, first of all, let's ask for a motion. Do I hear a motion? Someone willing to make the motion? Alderman Kinsella, second, Alderman Pousa. Eric, do you want to come up and just give us a little bit, and I can add to it maybe?
Back in 1996, the city council approved a development agreement with Noble Inc. This is for the Twin Pyramid Office Facility out at 74th Street and Route 15. There were a number of items that were to be addressed in the agreement, all of them except one had been, had been completed. The one that was not completed was an extension of the sewers to the facility. The city did, I think, install an aerobic system to accommodate the existing facility, but in order to, what we're really doing is reaffirming the city's commitment to honor that agreement that was done in 1996. So just finish it off. And, and so the agreement states that we would put in the sewers within three years, and we've talked to Royce with wastewater, and said that can be done in that time period. But, and if, and if some development comes to the table prior to the, prior to the sewers being completed, that the city would install an aerobic system for a temporary solution for that development.
Okay, so let me just fill in a few more blanks. This was done, Roger Cook was mayor in 19, at the time this was done. There was also development improvements of South 74th Street at this time. City council bought into all of that. When Mayor Kern became mayor in 97, Mr. Noble came back forward, there was a letter sent at that time or signed that we still recognize that, that this was the one thing that wasn't done. When I became mayor in early 2005, he came back to us again, and we said, yes, we understand, we're still, you know, you're not quite ready, we're, we understand there's a commitment. Garrett felt it was best because of the length of time. Now, we had given him our word on a couple of occasions that we were still going to honor this commitment going back to the console of 1995. And we had completed almost all the things except for the one. We, Garrett recommended that we redraft the development agreement so that it's more clear and spells it out. And then we came to this three-year agreement that we, and in talking to Royce, he felt very comfortable that we could work the sewer situation out by then. So it's really, it's a completion of a commitment that this council made. Do you even believe you were on the council when we, when we made this, the city, I was not here then, but it was, it was continued and recognized that it was a commitment of this council twice since then. And so that's what this is about. It's cleaning up some old business. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Questions? Alderman White.
I've got a little bit of a problem, Your Honor, with just recently bringing this approaching 20 years now, and all of a sudden now we're going to have to add a second statement in there about if we can't provide the sanitary city sewer, we're going to have to pay for the private sewer. I think that, to me, I have a couple of voting on that because, affirmative on that. Because with the period of time, I realize you've done the extension, but if developers had any insight of something that's coming, I think our sewer department.
There's no inside at the exact moment. We believe we'll be ready, but in his fairness, if something came through in upcoming days and we weren't right there, this is what the city council pledged and did before.
Just for purposes of clarification, that aerobic system requirement was in the original requirement. Those strike-throughs aren't based upon the old agreement versus what's been added just for this one. There was an aerobic system requirement in the original one. We thought maybe it wasn't going to be necessary anymore, but apparently it is to the developers, so that, that was, I just wanted to make clear, that was a requirement of the original.
So this is just making good on this commitment to Mr. Noble for many years now.
Do we have a sewer line that's close to development?
We would have to still divide, we've got a sewer line across the street, right, Royce? And we possibly may work something out still with Stuckey's to do it, don't you?
We don't have sewer line available at this time. I mean, we do have a pump station that's about, you know, a half mile down Route 15 from it, so we would look at two different things, want to either run a grabby line to Stuckey's treatment plant, or to run the line down to the pump station that we already have.
So we don't, and we don't have any idea what this would cost. I mean, we're committing to do this, we have no idea what it costs.
Without doing some preliminary engineering, there's no way for me to tell you that.
I just have a problem voting on something that I have no idea what this would cost. I mean, it could be $10 million.
Uh, no, it won't be $10 million.
Well, we have no idea what it could be.
Now, at this point, I mean, it depends on the size of the development, what size of pump station would be necessary, or those sort of things, but the distance from here that we're there to Stuckey Township, but with a grabby sewer would be relatively inexpensive as far as sewers concerned.
Is it necessary to, I mean, this is a 20-year-old agreement. You say there isn't any development right now, is there really any reason that can have this agreement in effect? It is waiting till.
Mr. Noble, I think, has been very patient. He is working on development. I can't give you a time or anything else, but he feels like the time is getting better with the Route 15 corridor. And he's anxious that, you know, we get, that we don't lose sight of the fact that we had promised, that was part of the original agreement. And I, you know, I wasn't on the council then, but I have always had the posture, if the city has, has stood behind something, I think that we, I think we still should stand behind our work. Yes, sir?
Mayor, I appreciate your background, but I'm still a little bit hazy in terms of, is this delay a result of cities in action or the lack of development?
Mutual. He didn't have, he had a couple possible developments a couple of times, and we had conversations, and then they didn't pan out. And at the time that we had conversations with him, we said that we would, as soon as he took a step forward, we would, we would move again on him. So we, we were at the table, Mr. Noble's been in my office many times in the last 11 years with potential, I mean, he's never quit working the project. I will tell you, he had a lot of different possibilities. So I don't think it was just him or just us. We didn't pursue it. The fact that there's so many other things that have been, you know, on our plate for different reasons in all parts of town, we didn't just ever go back and say, let's clean up this whole business just because.
But is this, excuse me, is, was this part of the original Westfield Plaza development?
No, it was not part of the original Westfield Plaza. That was 1986. That was when TIF 3 was originally done, I believe. Sound right, Eric?
86, yes.
This was when they came through and widened and improved 74th Street all the way to the intersection and made the intersection. At that time, Mr. Noble started to develop that property. There was a lot of different significant things. You know, he's, we've talked to him several times on leads we had, and he was always cooperative at looking at the what-if, but we never could bring a deal to the table. He's, he feels very confident now. Once again, he knows that elections are coming up. He just felt that we needed to get this, and Garrett and I spoke, we need to get this cleaned up, we need to get, a deadline of three years, it must be done. It's drug on, and, and he feels like he is getting much closer on some potential development as well.
And this would be on both sides of 74th Street?
No, it would be, it's, he's on the southeast side of, southeast, is that where it is, Royce? Southeast corner where, where the Oncology Center is. He owns additional acres there that, that are to be sewed. Now, it's not to say once it's across there, you can't sewer other areas in that area. I mean, when this all happened in ninety-five, there was discussion and there was news articles about taking Seventy-Fourth Street all the way through to Town Hall Road. There was many discussions when I first got into council in ninety-seven. And, uh, but, you know, a lot of it just didn't develop. And then in recent years with the, uh, recession, you know, some of those leads in, uh, a few years ago came to a halt as well. We, I can tell you, it doesn't mean a thing, but I can tell you right now, the Economic Development Department in my office have had a number of new leads along the Route Fifteen corridor in that area. So can I promise you anything's about to bust? No. I can tell you, in the last eighteen months, we've had a significant number of inquiries.
And I think the, the other question that I still have, and I've had it for a long time, really has to do with the empty retail spaces that are out there at Westfield Plaza. I, I would like to see us, you know, be developing plans for backfilling some of these empty places as opposed to continue to grow out. And I understand Alderman Wigginton's point that it's important for us to do so because, uh, back when we were doing the, uh, the new plan, you might recall that I was the most hopeful about the extension of the Route Fifteen corridor and expanding south of the city there. So I understand that, but I'm also concerned about our inability to, uh, backfill some of these empty retail spaces. And I hope that, uh, you know, we'd be looking at those possibilities as well.
Let me just shed this light, because, you know, you're still relatively new on the council. A good example of, uh, the entire eleven and a half years I've been mayor, we worked on sixty-four oh one West Main. Most of our dead ends there were because the lending institutions were not interested in even picking up the phone and answering our calls when we had leads. Westfield Plaza has been very similar. We've had a number of leads. We had, uh, I can go back, ten years ago when I first became mayor, an Old Country Buffet wanted in there. They wanted several of the empty sites. They wouldn't even answer us. They wouldn't even entertain a meeting. We had a number of businesses wanting to go in there. The best we could figure out, the group that has that property, or, I think some of it's been sold now, right, Eric? But it was, it was definitely in a situation where they were, uh, no doubt using it as a tax loss. Because there was no interest in many of the things that we came forward with to develop the Westfield Plaza. We feel like now, um, maybe there's some movement again. Eric got contacted not too long ago.
There, there are actually two separate parcels. So that, that shopping center is actually split up with two different owners. And the, the mayor's absolutely correct. We had a number of prospects look at it and even tour it, but the, the owner was basically taking it for a loss, not his taxes. Now, I think both sides have been sold, still two separate owners. But I did meet with the, uh, the agents for, for the one side, and they're very interested. They, we sat down for about an hour and tried to come up with some ideas on, you know, how to market that area and how to, uh, you know, especially with all the other things going on around Fifteen, on how to really, to fill that space. So, I mean, it's, it, there's a lot of things going on in the background that, uh...
So, well, I can't sit here once again, Alderman Randall, promise. I can tell you, in my eleven and a half year in this seat, this position, there's more, I think, true movement right now than we've seen in the last dozen years.
One, one more question, if I may. Uh, this question is for Royce. Royce, I think it was mentioned that you believe that this could be done over a three-year period of time. Would you imagine this being done in phases through, you know, your budget for the department?
Well, we don't have any money in this year's budget to do it.
Right, I understand that.
So, uh, I would say we could do it in phases or, depending on what Master Sewer Council would like to do, we could see about getting in the budget for next year. But it's just a matter of getting some engineering done and, uh, determining which direction to take.
And this may take, Alderman Randall and all of you, this may take a whole different light for all of you. There are some other nibbles in that area about some development. We're told that there's possibilities of a number of acres that are being looked at to be put under contract. If some of that truly happens, then the sewer planning has to come to the table and look at a bigger picture. All I can tell you is, once again, I can't sit here tonight and, and tell you that somebody in this room or somebody who's not here is not going to hold, you know, hold me, try to hold my feet to the fire two years from now because the mayor said. I'm just going to tell you cautiously, we have had more leads and more potential, uh, nibbles on that area, that whole area, in the last twelve to eighteen months than we've had in my entire eleven and a half years. And I think it behooves us to, first of all, live up to our obligation with Mr. Noble, and second of all, realize there could be a couple different things that come into play as we plan the next three years to try to put this sewer responsibility.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your intelligence.
Okay. Yes, Rafi?
Mr. Mayor, what concerns me is the development out there at the present time, it has Dennis Forney owning another apartment. Do you know what's going to go in there that Mr. Noble wants to build? Is it going to be homes?
Well, the apartments, uh, the apartments are up there, the apartments are up there east of Kmart.
Right.
But this is, this is across Fifteen, and he's looking for more commercial.
Commercial as opposed to residential?
He's looking for more office park, uh, medical park type thing is what he's been telling us. So he's not looking for, there's been no talk with me, or I don't think Eric either, about any residential. This is, this is commercial, this is professional office, uh, space, is what, uh, he's been working towards.
Thank you very much.
Johnny?
An agreement is an agreement. Now, it was twenty years ago, was to say that we had an agreement with somebody four years ago. I think that the, uh, regardless to what city council made that agreement, the city made, they did make an agreement. I think we should, uh, keep our promise to do what we said we was going to do, whether we were there or not.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you, Johnny, because I think if we were going to use the excuse to get out of it, I think we should have done it before now. But there's constantly been so much potential along Fifteen. We always looked at this as both, one, we have the responsibility to complete the agreement, and two, we saw it as more potential opportunity. So I think it's pretty clear now. We have a motion to approve the amended development agreement with Noble Inc. We have a motion and we have a second. Alderman Consilla made a motion?
Yes.
Pousa seconded. If there's no further questions, I call for a roll call.
Alderman Hazel.
Aye.
Now, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. I, I want to tell you, I do support what happened in the previous council. I'm not sure that I would have voted for this last change in there in the first agreement. The, uh, invented the sewers and city sewers and out there where they provide private aerobic sewers.
Well, that was the same thing they did originally.
I understand that.
And that was actually the council's suggestion then, because it was more economical, that it was forcing the sewer to be built at that time. So that's, okay, roll call.
Alderman Hazel.
Aye.
Alderman Consilla.
Aye.
Alderman Pousa.
Aye.
Alderman Bittner.
No.
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Alderman Randall.
Aye.
Alderman Ovian.
Aye.
Alderman Anthony.
Aye.
Alderman Sillsby.
Aye.
Alderman Dillman.
Aye.
Alderman Cybert.
Aye.
Alderman White.
No.
Alderman Gletty. Alderman Elmore.
Aye.
Alderman Musgrove.
Aye.
Alderman Wigginton.
Aye.
Okay, eyes have it, and we move on. At this time, I ask for a motion to approve an annexation agreement with Belva West Gateway LLC, William B. Shamlofel III and Carmen Shamlofel. Do I hear a motion?
No, no.
Motion by Alderman Wigginton, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Consilla. Discussion. Yes?
I'd like to say, um... I, I just have a problem. We keep annexing and annexing and annexing, and we can't take care of the properties on the streets and the roads that we have right now. So, um, to continue to annex in the hope that there might be future development, we've got to start taking care of our core before we keep adding to the city. So I'll probably be voting, I will be voting no for this time.
And that's your, certainly your right to do so. I, I just say, you know, uh... There is, been a lot of planning going on in this corridor. I think we all know that just down the road is Belva West High School, which I think we all would have agreed that that development around that school would have probably been much further had we not had the unbelievable recession a few years ago. Uh, just about anywhere you build a seventy-five million dollar high school, if you look at Edwardsville and different places, you see development. It's still one of, I believe, and what my, I think my planning department believes is one of our crown jewels for development along that Fifteen Frank Scott corridor. So, uh, this one seems to be, and I think you referred to Alderman Bittner in all fairness, you referred to, um, the, the Tiff Ten, right? Who said it? Mr. White, I'm sorry. And as you know, the two schools were built out there in that one. They did come to, uh, through. But the eighteen hundred acres that maybe are, whoever said that, um, um... That was Mr. Schleter, and as you know, he spent, lost a lot of money for, not for the lack of trying, but he just, uh, couldn't quite pull it together and worked very hard and spent a lot of money. So I think we're, we're kind of, we're kind of comparing apples to oranges here. So we have a motion. Alderman Hazel?
Walmart moved out. They left us a building. It's empty. Like to fill it, but I'm not going to tell anybody they can't develop in this town until we do.
Well, and what's...
And so, of course, I'm ready for new development, and we'll be voting for this. And not going to stagnate the town because there's still available space.
And once again, as we've said repeatedly, we've had numerous places, people wanting to develop Walmart, the old Walmart. But Mr. Cronkey and Mrs. Stainberg have been in legal battle from the time, the last four, five years, and still are fighting about ownership responsibility. And they have not, they have not entertained any of the possible buyers or renters. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Alderman Hazel.
Aye.
Alderman Consilla.
Aye.
Alderman Pousa.
Aye.
Alderman Bittner.
No.
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Alderman Randall.
Aye.
Alderman Ovian.
Aye.
Alderman Anthony.
Aye.
Alderman Sillsby.
Aye.
Alderman Dillman.
Aye.
Alderman Cybert.
Aye.
Alderman White.
Aye.
Alderman Gletty.
Aye.
Alderman Elmore.
Aye.
Alderman Musgrove.
Aye.
Alderman Wigginton.
Aye.
Motion carries. Communications. I'll read them. We have three of them. Is there any objection if I read them together?
No.
Okay, communications, the first part is from the Optimist Club of Belva requesting permission to hold the annual Santa Parade on Friday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, at ten a.m. Second request comes from Rachel Harmony, Art of the Square, Lindenwood University, Mark Kern, and Grimma Gorley to hold the second annual, that's kind of a special art show on Friday, September ninth, two thousand sixteen, from four to eight, at Art of the Square's Public Building and in that quadrant at Thirty Public Square. The third, communications from the Belva Historical Society requesting to hold a mid-century modern concert on September eighteen, two thousand sixteen, at eighty-five oh one West Main Street, from two until five p.m. This is a property that they have purchased.
Charles King Museum.
Charles King Museum. Do I hear a motion to approve those three? Alderman Pousa, second by Alderman Sillsby, to approve those three communications. If there's no other questions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have no, uh, petitions. Resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read Resolution thirty-two seventy-five and thirty-two seventy-six by title only. Motion by Sillsby, second by Gletty, to read by title only. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a problem if we read them, if we ask for a motion, read them together? Resolution, uh, thirty-two seventy-five, a resolution requesting approval from IDOT to close Illinois one fifty-nine for the Oktoberfest. Resolution thirty-two seventy-six, a resolution requesting approval from IDOT to close one fifty-nine for the Labor Day Parade.
Motion to approve Resolution thirty-two seventy-five and thirty-two seventy-six.
Motion by Sillsby, second by, uh, Hazel. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Hazel.
Aye.
Alderman Consilla.
Aye.
Alderman Pousa.
Aye.
Alderman Bittner.
Aye.
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Alderman Randall.
Aye.
Alderman Ovian.
Aye.
Alderman Anthony.
Aye.
Alderman Sillsby.
Aye.
Alderman Dillman.
Aye.
Alderman Cybert.
Aye.
Alderman White.
Aye.
Alderman Gletty.
Aye.
Alderman Elmore.
Aye.
Alderman Musgrove.
Aye.
Alderman Wigginton.
Aye.
Motion's carrying. Uh, I don't know of any unfinished business. Ms. Lee is in the... I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Arden says. Okay, you can tell I missed a meeting here. Um, Arden says, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Arden seventy-eight, seventy, seventy-nine, seventy-eight, and seventy-nine, seventy-nine. By title only. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Cybert, to read those two motions. Arden says by title only. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a problem reading them as a group?
No.
Motion to, uh, Arden's number seventy-nine, seventy-eight. An Arden's authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement with William B. Shamlofel III and Carmen Shamlofel. Arden's seventy-nine, seventy-nine. An Arden's annexing certain territory, territory owned by William B. Shamlofel III and Carmel, Carmen Shamlofel to the city of Belva, Illinois.
Motion to approve Arden seventy-nine, seventy-eight and seventy-nine, seventy-nine.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Dillman. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Hazel.
Aye.
Alderman Consilla.
Aye.
Alderman Pousa.
Aye.
Alderman Bittner.
No.
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Alderman Randall.
Aye.
Alderman Ovian.
Aye.
Alderman Anthony.
Aye.
Alderman Sillsby.
Aye.
Alderman Dillman.
Aye.
Alderman Cybert.
Aye.
Alderman White.
Aye.
Alderman Gletty.
Aye.
Alderman Elmore.
Aye.
Alderman Musgrove.
Aye.
Alderman Wigginton.
Aye.
Both motions pass.
Your Honor?
Yes?
If we're going to unfinished business, I have a question about the, uh, today's minutes. And I didn't mention it that time because I couldn't find it on my computer in time. Can I bring that up now, or would it be better under new business?
I'd say unfinished is okay.
Okay.
If we didn't catch it earlier today's meeting, correction, you just...
It's corrections and a bunch of your motion...
If you, yes, if you go to page twelve out of a hundred and twenty, or if you're looking at the minutes at seven out of twelve, and in that section, and I'm doing it again, in that section, it says that, um... All, it's the second last paragraph. Alderman Ovian asked if this would be through a property management. And we're talking about, he's talking here with, that's the wrong one. Hang on just a minute, please. I'm sorry. This was with Mr. Patel. And it's, it starts, Alderman White made a motion, seconded by Alderman Cybert, to approve this thing with Mr. Patel. And there was some question in the next paragraph, and he said there would be no packaged liquor. Okay, as I remember it, he said no to packaged liquor, but then somebody said, you mean we can't stop by and buy a six-pack of beer? And he said, oh, yeah, we'll have that. So I'm thinking it was either, uh, it was either a vocabulary, uh, choice, that he didn't understand us. But I think he clearly meant that he was going to sell liquor, in package liquor.
He did. I asked for clarification, and he gave clarification.
He gave clarification, everybody.
Yes.
Joe asked me. Okay.
Did they clarify it under the arguments?
He's clarifying, or is it okay?
In the arguments, it was clarified.
So we're okay then?
Aye.
Do you want to reflect differently on this?
I would, I would like to change it in a minute, so sometime ten years from now.
Well, here's what I would ask. I think this is the fairest way. Would you submit to me or submit to the clerk's office to recommend a change, and we'll note this discussion, and we'll make the change at the meeting on the sixth?
Sure.
Okay? Everybody okay with that?
Thank you.
Ms. Lee, is the new business, yes?
I have a brush, right? We have this, uh, minutes on communication.
Okay.
Other votes, it votes that I'm not present, and there's an Alderman Wigginton made a motion, second by Alderman Elmore.
So you didn't do that? So you didn't do that because you weren't there?
I, I could, yeah.
So if somebody can remember who did, who made that?
I follow.
Anybody remember who made that second? Do you remember?
I don't.
We'll check the recording. So let's, we'll make a note to check the recording on that. Alderman Galletti?
Can I ask, what the substance of this ordinance change coming up in September is going to be, since I'm the committee?
Mike?
Gary, I brought up a clarification that we're bringing up some sort of housing ordinance in September in the committee meeting, the ordinance and legal. I just want to know, are we proposing changes to it, or what is going to take place?
Well, initially, we were going to, as a committee, review it in light of the concerns that have been expressed by the public, that could lead potentially to amendment. You know, that's something that the committee itself by vote would approve and pass on to the council if you so desired.
So what, what's going to happen is, we're going to, we're going to look at that ordinance at that meeting, and then we're, we're going to be able to potentially make changes at that meeting, which would be...
No, no changes.
Correct. You could, you could recommend revisions. You may recommend no change. You know, it's, it's just going to be a review process, and, and the discussion and the motions would, would lead you to what the ultimate result would be that would be recommended to the council.
Check the audio tape. It's crystal clear.
Okay, Mr. Brown, you've had your chance. It's not...
You took care of the, of the business, of the business for the businesses. Why don't you take care of the business for the people?
Mr. Brown, it's going to be, it's going to be looked at, okay?
They're going to have you to look at it for six more months.
Okay. Ms. Leans, the new business. At this time, we have, I'm asking for a motion to approve an amended development agreement with Jackson Holding LTD for the remodeling expansion of the facility located at 18 and 22 Nar Jackson Street. Do I hear a motion? This is the eye doctor's building, and what he's asking for, Eric, you'll explain to me, is an extension on the enterprise zone. Their constructions, time-wise, take a little bit longer. They got started a little later than they thought, I think is what really happened. So motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Pusa. Any questions about that? Roll call.
Alderman Hazel?
Aye.
Alderman Consilla?
Aye.
Alderman Pusa?
Aye.
Alderman Bittner?
Aye.
Alderman Tyler?
Aye.
Alderman Randall?
Aye.
Alderman Ovian?
Aye.
Alderman Anthony?
Aye.
Alderman Sillsby?
Aye.
Alderman Diddleman?
Aye.
Alderman Cybert?
Aye.
Alderman White?
Aye.
Alderman Galletti?
Aye.
Alderman Elmore?
Aye.
Alderman Musgrove?
Aye.
Alderman Wigginton?
Aye.
Motion carries. I just want to say real quick under, Ms. Leans, the new business. Again, I want to thank Dr. Sillsby for covering for me those two weeks and a couple days there. I've been back now, assuming the role, I guess, as of about the 17th or 18th of August. I got released to drive last Thursday, so I'm, I'm making great progress. Still doing some therapy, so I'm not necessarily been in the office 100% each day, but making great progress. I just want to thank everybody. A lot of cooperation and a lot of well wishes, and just want to say thank you. We put on executive session because when Garrett and I talked last week when this agenda was put together, there was a possibility of a personnel or possibly even a litigation case. The litigation case definitely didn't materialize for tonight. But the personnel issue had really never, there's been nothing really brought up about. There's something that's been dealt with, and I think it's all, you know, taken care of. So if there's nothing else that, you know, that used to be, I would just ask that we would ask for a motion. Motion by Alderman Galletti, second by Alderman Tyler. Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I thank you.